Good morning and welcome to the work session of the Maryland County Board of Commissioners for June 30th, 2022.
Good morning and welcome to the June 30th, 2022 work session of the Maryland County Board of Commissioners. At this time, we just ask that you silence any cell phones or electronic devices and we'll get started with the meeting. We have the agenda before us. Is there anything to add?
It's back on now.
If there's nothing to add, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Have a second. All in favor?
We're all star today. Can't see but.
Agenda is adopted and our item for business is discussion of future road projects and priorities. And we'll turn it over to Bill and Theron, I think.
Chairman Commissioners, thank you. Thank y'all for being here today. Thank y'all for coming back from the other night too. We just had a lot to talk about and felt that maybe with everything else we had going. So Bill's done some work up onto the history of the of the road system. And then I want to. But anyway.
Turn his mic down to him.
Yeah, this would've worked. So anyway, Bill has done a lot of work up. Bill C. and Bill G. has helped us with some numbers and looking at some other things we've got. So and we try to share this with Michelle as we go forth. But we wanted to talk to you guys about kind of the state of where we are with our paving in the in road system. We also want to talk about some of the needs. We want to talk about some of the funding that we have available and potentially available. And then we want to talk about just some priorities that you guys have as a board that we could we could go back and take a look at. Bill has he's reviewed the roads. We have ninety-two point eight miles paved roadways that have a surface rating of thirty-two to twenty-eight. He can tell you a lot more about that than I can. But that is actually roads that already have some moderate or severe base failure. And as we all know, once the base starts to fail, doesn't matter what you put on top of it, it's it you got a problem. It's your foundation. And of course, the most cost-effective way to do that is do the full-depth reclamation, which we've done on some. But with that kind of mileage, I mean, it's almost it would take forever. I mean, it's a forty-six, forty-seven million dollar project to do all of those. So we're gonna have to have a we're gonna have to have a plan to be able to do something, you know, different or seek more funding or change something along the way. We also have eighty-four point three-two miles of paved road that have a surface rating form of twenty-seven to twenty-six. That's got moderate cracking and less than twenty percent base failure. Those could be repaired and resurfaced. There again, looking to try to do all of that, that's another almost eleven million dollars. We then have thirty by thirty point seven-six miles of minor cracking, but you're looking at another almost three point seven million dollars for that. Three point seven billion. Now, I these numbers are astronomical and I don't want to scare y'all with those. But and we're not unique in this. Everybody in the country has has problems right now. We're just trying to keep their infrastructure up. And you guys have done a good job. Citizens have done a good job. We got splosts, T-splosts, and we try to take advantage of everything we have and do have. We we want to throw the numbers out there and let you guys see those. Luthersville Road, we began in 2021 to improve Luthersville Road by reconstructing the roadway with FDR binder and topping. We also widened the roadway from a varied width nineteen feet and twenty feet to twenty-one feet. And we'll talk about that in just a few minutes because that may be an important thing that we look at as we as we seek dollars. And in 2022, we're doing another section. And that leaves remaining five point four mile section to three sixty-two. The estimated cost of that is right at three million dollars to be able to complete that. And then there's an additional three miles from Highway three sixty-two to eighty to eighty-five. And that's one and a half million. That that section I don't think is as bad as the the first section. Okay.
While you're addressing this, as I listen to you describe the things that's bad, what about this alligator alligatoring that goes on out there on those edges? I see more and more of that.
Yes, sir. Those would probably follow Bill by right in this twenty-five to twenty-four rating.
Well, it's in both of them. Really, when you start getting higher, you're getting base failure. Means you're subgrade base failure.
Well, I'm seeing a good bit of that on that one.
Works every kind of ground.
You're right. The rains really sped this process up.
Yeah, it's base failure. Whether, depending on how many square yards there is in a given distance, it's kind of where you get to this twenty or thirty or thirty-five percent base failure.
When you get so much of that, you can't really patch it. You it's not cost effective. Cost of what a patch it does do the FDR. So.
And that's what kind of puts you over the edge to go to full-depth reclamation versus a little patch and a resurface. Yeah.
I'm sorry, what road was that Commissioner?
Well, Alton is the one that I see the most.
Is it on the Alton end going into Luthersville?
It's on both ends.
On going to, okay.
I would say it's probably more so on the Luthersville side.
And then also, you know, we have some large pipe culvert project on Strickland Town Road. And as time goes on, you know, we have more and more culverts. I mean, things that they'll just show up after a rain. You never know. They kind of just happen. One of the other roads we talked about is Forest Road from the South City Limits to Lowdough to Cousins Road. That's about four miles. There's there's several options with that. Ideally, FDR would could be used on that. That's a two point one million dollar estimate. So two point one.
And that's just the southern four miles.
Right.
Probably the other northern section is probably another two or three miles to the.
Charlie, you was on the south end or the north end of the course?
North end.
North again. Of course, the Grant the Grant.
Forest Road on that end was resurfaced back in two thousand and I don't know, two thousand and ten or something. So it's it's okay, but unfortunately, because of the traffic being rerouted when there's an accident on eighty-five, you've got a lot more traffic. But that that end of the of Forest Road is is spot. That that's but the this other end going towards Reno is the one that's in the worst shape.
That upper section is three point two mile and that's rated at twenty-seven. That's the northern section.
I have a question. Is there any way we can determine how many roads in Maryland County that feeds into a state state road? We know Luthersville, we know Forest Road, but on the other sections of the county like over where Beth and all them live, what other roads do we have that runs into state roads?
They're all over. Every road up on, you know, twenty-seventh, we hear Luthersville does concrete does twice. You got.
Some bullet.
Yeah, Alley Road, and then you go Bell, wherever you go.
I mean, you got you got Phil, how you got all those roads going out Raleigh Road because that's a state route.
Yeah, I mean, Keith Road.
Coming into forty-one and eighty-five.
Yeah, coming out of Manchester, everything runs straight. It's a state road.
The only reason I'm asking is that if we are able to go to the state or look at other funding other than Luthersville and Forest Road, if we have a general idea of what those roads look like as it as a further down the road project, because those are the roads that are being mostly impacted simply because they are feeding in off of a state route road.
What do you what?
Take a little bit of that together.
All right, thanks.
Let's put your list together.
What are the things that that might, when we start looking at those and prioritizing those, might very well be to take a look at those that connect state routes? You know, if you got one that far as it goes from one state route to the to the other, you may get more through traffic through there. It won't just be just the residential traffic, but.
River Road.
River Road.
River Road.
And it's just a lot of.
River Road, just because, I mean, it didn't go all, I don't know, River Road actually connects eighty-five West with eighty-five East. It sure does. It sure does.
White House Parkway.
They're just, I mean, so busy. I mean, that's that's why we have we have such a big county. It's it takes a lot to. All those, but it there's, I mean, there's four state routes coming right here in Creighton. And I guess you have crossroads in the Woodbury and I guess in Alton. Yeah, I mean, there's crossroads. You're right.
Well, I mean, the only reason I'm suggesting it is if you at least have an outline of what that looks like, you can at least start projecting which one of those roads you're going to need to address earlier, so you're not waiting till the last minute. And then the other thing is to see how many of those roads have bridges. Because, you know, we we're not isolated in any other county, but definitely we're going to have to look at this and project as far out as we possibly can, because as the county grows, as industry come, we got more traffic. And the weight of these vehicles are astronomical.
Right. And and you mentioned, but surely the bridges. Luthersville Road, for example, runs originally. It does not have any bridges, which is, I mean, rarely ever see that. But when you start dealing with a bridge and you have to widen the bridge and do all of that or improve it, that there again, that's another cost added added back in. Bill has looked at Forest Road and of course, I give you guys the figures of what it'd take to to do the FDR. There's there's some opportunity there to do some patching, but the patching is going to add up pretty quickly. And it probably would be several hundred thousand dollars. Is this your total? Three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars total to patch that road.
And in that condition, when they patches get bigger as they start doing that work, it just it just kind of gets bigger. It just happens. So it's gonna probably it probably a little bit more than that.
Or if we get a rainy winter, they tend to pop up.
And and you know, the the problem with patching then, if we, because ultimately, you're gonna have to go back and and fix the other areas because this patch may hold, but this area between the patches will fail. So I guess what to say that at some point, you still gonna have to address where all those patches are. And the patches will probably either have to be built back out or or try to piece build them together and do an overlay. Just isn't a good process for doing that. The other thing Bill talked about, and this is more of a safety issue than anything else. And I and I personally think this may be what we need to do, at least in the short term, until we can come up with some long-term funding. And that would be maybe a temporary overlay that would kind of seal the the road and the areas that's coming apart, Bill, back back together. Now, we we have to understand going in, hey, this isn't going to last forever. But it could it could put it off just a little bit and make it safe until you can get funding for the FDR.
The whole four miles.
Yeah. A hundred and twenty. Hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
That's with an overlay on Forest Road?
Right.
That's just in the in those five severe locations.
It works so bad, okay.
Let me.
It's just very rough and it's been a hundred something patches putting in.
Well, just looking at the stats of Forest Road, this year alone, public works have gone out there six times. Last year, they went out twelve, year before six. So altogether, they've had to work on this road a total of thirty times. And what I really want to know is when they're patching, I thought they were gonna go in and square it out. They're just putting it right in the hole and packing. So why or can we not square it out when we do it?
You can square, but when you have base failure, you're you're wasting a lot of time, labor, and material. Because the base is failing and there's trucks go over. It's just flexing. I mean, the best application for square patching, if you have like a small five by five area and everything else around you and it's not not in base failure, you can cut that out, square patch it, and it would be there for a long time.
Your your reason for cutting it is to get out of the bad material, the good material. In this situation, you don't have any good material to get in.
I mean, you're not talking about a five or ten foot stretch. You're talking about three, four, five hundred to really stop it.
You're gonna have to take the phone and houses and make a convention and then squirt it in there to insulate it and then come out with a way to cut through and then fill it from the inside out.
Yeah.
I mean, the ditch patch operation, you could go in with a milling machine. In the milling machine, you could have them cut out four and a half inches. You cut three inches of the binder down, an inch and a half of top in. And it would be pretty substantial. It would last a good good long time. But the rest of those sections that are not patched are still gonna continue to come up.
So I'm sorry. So what you're recommending now is just to patch those five areas?
There's some options there, whatever the board wants to do. I mean, at the least, you want to pull over and make them a little bit safer to drive.
With the overlay is what you're talking about? That would be the temporary.
Well, the other thing too is the edges are so messed up. It's not just the road itself, but on the sides of the of the the edges are bad too. So there are some that drop so down that when people are trying to get over to avoid someone else, they don't have anything. And I think that's, you know.
That's a that's a problem. And that's typical with all the roads that are in that category. And that, you know, that thirty down to twenty-nine, twenty-eight.
I guess the question to ask, what is full-depth reclamation for a length of this? What are y'all looking at?
Two point one billion. Two point one billion.
How many miles is that?
Four miles.
Let me talk about a little bit about funding and where we are with funding. And then we're gonna we're not we're not gonna leave you guys hanging with this. We got some recommendations on what we need to do with this too. Right now, I'm looking at T-sploss because we use our splost, Bill, you correct, step in. We use our splost to subsidize our thirty percent that we need on the LeMig every year. So that's what we've been doing, the, you know, the the splost for. We have the T-splost and of course, it's it's done well and we're very fortunate to have T-splost. To this point, we have and everything we've done to this point has been paid for. No outstanding issues with with any new T-sploss. We've done Mount Pilgrim, Peaceful Lane, and Tuskegee. We repaired store drains. We bought some equipment with that. And we have spent to date about one and a half million dollars. Our projected collection is five point two five, with all that economy driven. So right now, year to date, I mean, not year to date, but program to date, we have collected two billion, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Two what?
Two billion, six ninety-eight. We have spent the one million, one seventy-seven, two eighty. So that leaves us a balance of one million, one seventy-seven, two eighty.
I'm sorry, repeat that again.
One million, one seventy-seven, two eighty. Okay?
Currently.
Currently. And if you project that out, Bill did these projections. I appreciate him doing that. Projected out till the end of the year, we're looking at two billion, oh, twenty-four, four forty-eight. All right? If you take the projected collections and you take all the collections through twelve of twenty-two, that's three point five. That counts what we've spent, what we have, and what we'll collect the rest of this year. You end up with about one point nine million dollars remaining on your program for T-sploss. Now, that's the end of the program.
I came up one point seven five, but okay.
And you may be right, but that but in that range is where where we are with the with the T-sploss remaining. T-sploss was five years, that's a five-year program. And of course, we're about.
Two and a half years. Couple of years into it.
Yeah. So so Michelle, y'all remember about next year, you'll need to start talking about renewal of T-sploss. Okay, so so what what we've got out of the dollars that's remaining, we may we've have a commitment to do Bueller Ebbage Road. And that projected cost, Bill, is what about a billion?
A million five.
A million five. So i- if we do the million five on that and we we did say Forest Road, you'd be looking at only having about four, five hundred thousand dollars left in your entire T-sploss program. And then, of course, you'll have to wait out till the term comes around again. So I mean, you could do it.
But all of that money would go to one area of the county and not provide for the entire county.
You would have spent three-fourths of the money probably in in on just a couple of projects. So we met with G.DOT last week, yeah, last week. And we talked to them about projects and what they could, you know, possibly could do. I mentioned the width of Luthersville Road earlier. And I did that for a reason. I don't be sure that was telling somebody a little incident down there over last week or so.
You're talking about with the ambulance?
Right.
That was the other day.
Right, yeah. So that was just the other day. And so anyway, one of the things, when we talked to G.DOT, we talked about safety. They have they have different pockets of money. Okay, safety is one of those pockets. When they think of safety, they're talking about signage and striping and things. But years ago, they looked at safety and they may still do. We just hadn't asked the question yet in a different manner. We we went and we got a lot of projects approved because of safety. It was because the roads were so narrow and our traffic kept going, count kept going up. So to me, Luthersville Road is a is a prime example of that. It's so much better where we widen it. You get out in some of those other little sections and like someone said earlier, their shoulders are fluffing off. It it's bad. So so what I'd like for us to do, we start talking to G.DOT, I'd like for us to talk and see if there's a way they can pull safety money into that as well. And let us combine that safety money to maybe use for widening the road. And then we could, you know, put other dollars in to to do the the full-depth reclamation. And, you know, you could you could do the widening on roads that you aren't necessarily gonna have to do a lot of repair on. And then you could do this overlay like Bill was talking about, and you could tie that that widening into the regular pavement so people riding that road don't don't see, well, there's a, you know, big patch running along the edge.
From what everybody's saying, it sounds like Forest is in just as bad a shape.
Forest is in pretty bad shape. It is. It's in pretty bad shape. Now, what 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 G.DOT has told us, and that's one of the reasons I really want to come back and talk to you guys. They get a lot of requests for for everything. They need to know that everybody's on the same sheet of music with what we want. We've already told them, look, you know, y'all's motto has always been, we'll help you if you help yourself. Well, we've helped ourselves. We we've done everything we could do. You guys have done a good job with, you know, with the roads and concerns with them. We our T-sploss passed overwhelmingly. So we've helped ourselves and and I'm hoping that they will certainly help us. And so so what we would like to do is this. We'd like to talk to you guys about developing a priority and having and let's let's rank that priority from where where we need funding and where we need funding first. Now, one thing I will say is the first trip to G.DOT, we're not gonna get everything we need or everything we want. But what I think is a good way to do it is to go get a project from G.D.O. Come back and do that project and do a good job with it. And then go back to G.D.O. and say, look, we did what we said we would do. Here's this project. It looks good. We're ready to go. What can you help us with now? So they they will continue. Once you, once they see you're doing things and you're helping yourself, they will they will help you. Now, years ago, they had matching programs. So we had a sales tax program in the early nineties where for every dollar we collected, they put in a dollar. And that was a tremendous program. We were able to get all kinds of things, bridges done, some of the safety projects. When we renewed it six years later, they didn't, they were not as generous, but they still gave us sixty cents on the dollar for the projects that we did. So I guess what I'm looking at is we got, we know we need to do Luthersville Road. We know we've got to do something with Forest Road. First try, I would say, as we go, is to see if they'll give us dollar for dollar for what we've got. And then we could turn that two billion dollars worth of.
A million.
Into four million. And 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 I think there'll be a willingness there. Lucasville Road is a is a pretty easy sale because it has a lot of traffic. The road we looked at to the day with G.D.O., you got more subdivisions coming off of that.
That's one we have so many state routes coming into, right?
Right. It's it's three connections.
Really, four?
But it wouldn't be but it wouldn't be four million for that. It would be, if we do a dollar for dollar, it'll cost two million. And we put in a million, they put in a million, it's two million.
Yeah, that's right.
Right. So we'd have that for Forest Road.
Right. Have that for Forest as well. So so that's what I would like to pose is we go see what we can get from there. Understand the priority we've got, Luthersville Road and Forest Road. And what what if you guys, you know, are willing to to put that forward because this is our priority and name those as your priority, then what we will do is we'll put together a letter for Chairman Signet here. And we will set up a meeting like right away with G.D.O. Commissioner. And we'll invite Dennis McIntyre, who I've worked with, a little head. You know, you'll go with us if you need to, to help us. And and I think we'll get some funding for this, particularly when we go and show what all we've done to try to make it work ourselves and this connectivity. And so my thought would be, look, let's take those roads. Let's take Luthersville Road. We already got it started. We built part of it.
It's another mile.
Got another mile. Right, fairly soon. And let's take Forest Road and let's see what.
If there's any others, let's take them all just to see.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we can always narrow it down. It'd be very appreciative.
Some culverts that might be that would be costly.
So we don't know. They may say yes. You may get them on that day.
And then you've got this, we talked a little bit about this federal infrastructure. And even the G.D.O. said, look, we, this thing is, right now, we don't understand what's going on with it. But we need to also look at that. Some of them are, I talked to Carroll County about what they were looking at. But it had, and it was a safety deal. It it had to be, they had to have accident data. They had to have all this stuff. And that particular program almost looked like it would be the regional program because they were actually talking about having three rivers work within to get it done. Now, they weren't sure about safety, but I mentioned that widening of the road within because they have the same problem we have. So so really looking at what we've got. I mean, sploss, we're gonna need to keep sploss, you know, I think in touch. But we need to have that for our, we need. And and you guys put a little bit more in if you're thirty percent, which y'all always do, just a little bit more. We're putting four, four or five hundred. Yeah, you probably gotta put three hundred in, but it all goes for good stuff. So I I thought would be to immediately move to try to Bill's already got, Bill, Bill's already got a lot of these things together. We can write up the nice letter, make a little packet until it's presented. And we don't need two BD people to go, but you know, maybe the chair could go and then.
Be glad to do it.
Somebody had, let's put this together. Let's go and see what we can do about it. And then I would say this is something that once we complete whatever they give us, we go back again. I I remember going every, we would go and if there was a county that had not used their money to give us.
We haven't been in a while.
Right, we haven't been in a while. If we would go and we would get those dollars, we'd bring them back and do that project. So over, we we got, I don't know, six or eight projects that where the money was slated to go somewhere else, but since they weren't doing it, they were just sitting on it, deep key back to us.
You got the intersection.
Yeah.
Traffic signal project.
Right.
It was probably Buster and Shirley's first year we went up there. It's been a long time.
It's been a while. Well, we had talked about going prior to this, but I guess COVID kind of sort of changed a lot of that stuff.
We had a little bit of a.
But I am like Commissioner Thred Gill. I, we know Forest Road, we know Luthersville Road. It is so good to know what your projects look like. We don't have to go asking for all the projects. But I think it's good to let them be aware that we've done our due diligence. And that as we move forward, that we're just not coming for this one time. I'm sure there's other roads throughout the county that needs to be looked at. And since there's so many state routes that runs through Maryland County, I definitely think we need to look at it. We can say to them, this is our top priority.
Right.
But they also need to know we have others because this infrastructure money is used on a statewide basis. I mean, the state is doing so much work and I'm very disappointed to know that nothing has been put in place to address rural. You know, I mean, rural makes up more than sixty percent of Georgia roads. You know, I mean, rural makes up more than sixty percent of Georgia roads.
It has less revenue.
And it has less revenue. And so this is when you have to talk to your state representatives to say, how do you all make sure that we trickle down? It's not just metro that needs the money. Uh, so once again, we still can, you know, G dot don't have anything to do with that, but I do have some more grant information about bridges I wanna.
See Shirley, I was thinking if we go up there and say, we really need about ninety million dollars to do what we need to do in the county, but we'll settle for four this year. It makes us sound real poor, but they may come up and say, God, four is a lot better than ninety.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Whatever you want, you ask for more, you're gonna get less and it seems like you compromise.
Budgets. You think about it. They come with the, you know, the sky and they're hoping to get somewhere down the road.
With that ninety.
You know, we've, we've been pretty successful. You know, we uh, this road's about one of the, one of the first things we looked at, not the time we ran out of gas, but uh, it was uh, Montgomery Road and you know, I, and I told her, I said, nah, this road's gonna wash out next, maybe right, and it did.
It did.
But you know, we, we were able at that time to call G dot on the telephone. And they sent us a hundred and fifty thousand dollar check, just with a, with a phone call.
Some of that comes with keeping that relationship intact.
It does.
Like I said, we, COVID has changed a lot of that, but I think we have a good chance with our representative we have now. I think he will be, he'll be looking out for Maryweather County. And so we, we need to take advantage of that. So why not have, let's find our next, maybe four or five.
Right.
Big projects and let's put it, let's go with seven projects instead of just two. And let's prioritize Luther'sville and I think Forest. They gotta be our number one and two, I think. And, and let's put those, let's put four or five more on there and just ask for it. And maybe we get somewhere in the middle.
That'd be flag.
And the good thing about that, and I agree, is that once you build that relationship and they've seen that you've done your due diligence. And then it's gonna help this board and whoever's on the board later, where those priority lies. Y'all want unexpected things to come and you don't realize it. So Bill has done a great job lining this up. He did this about four or five years ago.
Yeah.
And if we're going to stick to this as a model to work with, we have an idea of what that cost is gonna look like. And the sad thing is, material labor is constantly going up. So whatever we project this cost is gonna be today, we all know six months from now, it's probably gonna be more.
That's right. And one of the things, back to what you guys were talking about. Bill has already identified the state of two boughs that, that are already in severe failure.
Right.
And what we could do is we could go back and see where those ninety-two boughs intersect those state routes that we're talking about in connectivity. Uh, because, you know, they, they keep hollering down, maybe that they still have a little bit of responsibility of getting traffic on that road.
More than on each end.
We have one on each end.
So, now some of these, like Rocky Mountain Road, and I know it doesn't touch state route or nothing, but just as an example, some sections.
It does touch a state route, three sixty-two.
Yeah, but not, we're not on both ends, but it touches what? You hit Luther'sville and then back up to.
But it actually, it goes all the way back up to Harleston at eighty-five.
Yeah.
Rocky Mountain.
But it connects those other roads that could, that too.
It goes all the way, see, it becomes dirt on the other side.
Some sections of that road are worse than others because I guess it was paved at a different time, you know, one year you might have done two miles. It might have been eight years before they did the other. Also, sometimes your, your surface rating may change on a long road. History of paving. So, if they look at things that qualify, then we, we may have to kind of sift through.
I do wanna ask, Bill, once again, you've done an excellent job on this. This is something that you personally have. Do we have this set up so that it's in the system so whoever else is here will have this information? Can we put it in the system where, you know, because this board is gonna be changing at the end of this year, you don't know what changes. And one of the challenges that I found when I first came on the board was finding information. It was so difficult to find what was done, what was resurfaced, you know, we didn't have any idea what a road got resurfaced. So I would like to recommend that this information is put in a position where whoever's on the board, who's ever working in uh, public works, will have this information. We should be able to go and pull up when a road was resurfaced, when, you know.
It has it on this list. It's on this list.
I, I haven't, what I haven't done at this point, gone back to like twenty fifteen.
I'd say, yeah, it starts with like seventeen or eighteen. What did I say? Seventeen when they, it's out there.
Of course, you know, those, that list will have to be.
Updated.
Revisited, updated. Conditions can change fast.
But what I'm saying is that it's in a system.
Right.
On a computer. And keep it in a database so that whether Bill is here, you here, I'm here, whoever comes in after this board or whoever's here. They're not struggling to find out what you did or didn't do.
When we all go.
Michelle has a copy in there.
I'm working on a OneDrive.
Yeah, on a OneDrive? Yeah, that's what I'm saying, you know.
He got it in Excel already.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and I've shared it with Michelle, so it's in, I've got it all in hers as well.
I was just looking at this window of opportunity that we have. I mean, let's just face this July. We got August and September. We've got to get this done. I mean, we gotta hit the ground running.
Well, and their budget starts over July one, so we don't wanna be too late going because they've been committed their funds.
In the next two weeks.
It's a good, it's a good time to go.
Yeah.
But that's why we wanted to bring it forth here to you guys. It, you know, cause I think we were asking, can we wait till our next meeting?
Yeah.
And uh, we'd like to go ahead and have this ready to go. Uh, so, what, what I'm hearing from the board is you guys wanna put together a priority list. Top priorities are gonna be the uh, Luther'sville and Forest.
Right.
And uh, then we need to have other projects that uh, are on that priority list, uh, primarily those that connect state routes or connect other roads that run into state routes.
High traffic areas.
High traffic areas, cut through areas.
I'm in low.
Right. So we'll, we'll, we'll look at doing that. Alright, now back the other day, old uh, we had let a contract on La Mig. And uh, you guys have talked about taking a couple of roads off of that to try to address uh, Forest Road. Uh, I mean, those roads need paving. I, I might just suggest that you move forward with those two and, and with a commitment that we're gonna do something with Forest Road. At the very least, it would be.
Overlay.
This overlay that is planned for it.
Mr. Gay, um, truly, was planning, I was more than willing to give up our roads, Forest Road. But knowing what all Forest Road needs, I can understand that. However, one of the roads that's on this list, I've gone and rode these road. And Weaver Road is just not a high priority. There is a road that's um, off of Beulah Evans Road that I think needs it more. If not, then we need to extend it on to Luther'sville Road. Uh, you know, we decided, and maybe we changed, I don't know, maybe the board changed. But I thought we were under the intentions of doing roads based on which road need to be done the, the most and not by district. So if we're going back to district, that's fine, but I have some roads that are, definitely has a higher priority than Weaver Road. So we can talk about it in more detail, but I don't, it, it's not a priority. First of all, there's.
Right, right.
It has nobody, it has one trailer on it and I don't even know if anybody lives on that. So, you know, I wanna make sure that whatever roads we select, they are roads that are desperately needed. So I don't have a problem uh, taking Weaver Road off and not using it for Forest Road. But I have two other roads that is much, much priority and got more people living on it. So, and, and they're both off of Beulah Evans, not, yeah, Beulah Evans Road.
I, I know there's a couple of areas, we'll do whatever you guys want. There's a couple, a couple of areas uh, uh, in, in the thing. That this section of the, of that road actually connects back around to Beaver Creek.
Beaver Lake.
Beaver Lake. It serves the houses, the areas. There's a side road too, some of the Williams.
Ike Williams.
Ike Williams.
Ike Williams already resurfaced.
Resurfaced that. And it comes right into this section of Weaver Park. We resurfaced that road back uh, was one of the first years we did the full depth reclamation.
It's been six or seven years.
Well, I'll say the two.
We'll do whatever you guys.
I'll say this, the two in my district happen to be the road that my parents live on and a road that I live on. But that road has not had anything done in forty years and has not had striping at least in twenty-five or thirty.
Well, also, that road.
You don't have that many roads in your district that are county roads, not like we do.
I created the list and then we brought it to the board. And that was all, it was all based on that we're gonna put money on Luther'sville Road. A big dollar figure, over five hundred thousand dollars. But the others, we were gonna do the, the typical resurfacing that we do, minus the surface treatment. And so you've gotta, you've gotta get those roads that are not really bad before they get too bad. Because those, those that get really bad are gonna cost you a lot of money.
And I wish we knew what they did. I wish I knew what they did to that road forty years ago. Because it was one of the best put together roads. I mean, if you walked it or rode the golf cart on it, you can see it's just cracked everywhere. But it really was held together better than any other constructed road in this camp.
Like, I'm just guessing, it probably had a, a graded aggregate.
And it was a prisoner system that did it. I remember as a little child them out there doing it.
Probably had a graded aggregate base under it. That was just sole cement, surface treatment. You do the sole cement surface treatment, one of that that thick. Then if you get six, eight inches, you have a great graded aggregate base and then put your asphalt on it.
What you have with that is the grass will grow in and encroach in the road. I know there's some roads, right here in Alabama, they had it done for fifty years. And they were wide where they did them and, and then right before they redid them, they, they were almost like lane and a half road.
Probably so good because they hadn't dug those ditches out in a hundred years and the trees are bigger than I am in those ditches. So it wouldn't let it go anywhere, just kept it right there.
Well, we, we just, we just wanted to uh, you know, to ask y'all about this a bit because we got the contract out and we need to take those roads off. Or uh, I, I don't think there's enough in either of those roads to really fix the problem on Forest Road. I think we're just gonna have to commit some, so I, I wouldn't just, you know, we just wanted to bring that up, see what y'all wanted to do.
I definitely think we need to go to.
We do.
Go to G dot with the list as we talked about, with the understanding that if for some reason we don't get it, at a minimum, we're gonna go ahead and do the overlay on Forest.
We need to take the ambulance thing and all that and say, these are the safety issues.
Well, I mean, we can get, well, when G dot came, when we were over in Appleton and we were talking about Mount Carmarole. Uh, they wanted the data of how many accidents. And one of the things that we were really surprised to find out that there wasn't a lot of good data because the uh, State Patrol report was needed. So we got to make sure that we have that information. And the only thing we were able to get over off of Appleton and three sixty-two is they put that flashing light. Cause at first they were gonna come with a roundabout. So they are data driven, so there's no question about that.
State Patrol does the majority of the accidents, so we do need to, if that's information we need.
From the State Patrol so we can have that. Anything that would build our case even stronger, that would be good. And I'm sure there's gotta be a lot off of Luther'sville Road.
Is the, you know, the issue.
Probably got some county stuff there too, though. Don't you think?
Pressure there at three sixty-two. The other thing I wanna ask, right there at three sixty-two in Luther'sville, they have a stop sign on, is it on Luther'sville Park? The three sixty-two is a yield. I think that's where uh, Michelle had her accident.
And that was one that I was wanting as well.
An accident.
Is it not a yield? Is there a yield sign pulling the flare out?
There's a stop.
It's a stop sign.
Luther'sville's only one has stop signs, three sixty-two and three.
Right. And that's, you know, once again, you know, as we go talk to them is to see and then see how many accidents we've had right there. I know, we, we saw yours, I know there's been three.
Right. And one this morning. So I actually called Brian this morning and asked him to pull the data for nine-one-one so that we have, know where to go with State Patrol.
You have a little divided median section right there where the state is, I guess they widened. I think that happened after there, there was a pretty serious accident there back in the seventies or eighties. I think they came in and did some work that. But now, now that's where they probably do need to have a roundabout of. Roundabout, in my opinion, what, what they want to do. And we could ask them to do that. It's a state route.
The only thing is, just like they were gonna do a roundabout over there uh, on Mount Carmarole. But the citizens didn't wanna give up any of their land. So I mean, it's just a question of that.
Bugs don't understand roundabouts. They don't know how to use, for the most part, they don't know how to use it. They just get there and stop.
I wasn't a real fan of it because uh, I'd seen one like in Hilton, had done places that are multi-lane. And I thought, oh, that's, they're gonna get on the inside, they're just gonna go around in circles for hours. But uh, but these, I will say, work good. You could, you had to make several trips around till you could get off the thing.
An accident trying to get out.
Yeah. But uh, you know, it was uh, uh, but these work well. They put one, boy, they love them in Calwee. They gotta be everywhere. Put the U W C down in the, from sixteen.
So, so we're right at going to G dot to talk about Luther'sville Road, Forest Road, and then identify any other roads that have some kind of state connection that we can look at as a bigger project, knowing that we're not gonna get it all. But we're, as Commissioner Thred Gill said, we're gonna say, we've got our due diligence. We're asking for ninety million, but we're only gonna get four or maybe two.
And we'd be happy with it.
We'd like to get ninety million this year, but we'll settle for four because next year we're coming back.
Yeah.
Well, we know that you already got the projects, so you're just enhancing what you already have.
Enhancing what we have and enhancing primarily our funding resource, be able to do more projects. Because if we could get a billion dollars from that, that's a billion dollars that we free up on our, our money to spend on some of that. And I would, I would make it where, I mean, we were, we were always on a first-class basis, even the folks at schedule that you recall. Uh, and we were coming. And uh, we went every year. And I will say, other than maybe once, we always keep that with something. Just about every place.
So do we need to look and see?
DOT people, so man, because I'd have a contract, we were ready to start and they're like, I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Like, right here.
We don't know where you got this. Yeah.
So do we need to look at some dates? I mean, like what, we will try to look at in July to try to get a, an appointment time or what do we need to do?
Oh.
Yeah, I would say that we, I think we could probably take out next week, week of the fourth, but you go to that next week.
After that, let's do it as soon as we practically can. We'll, we'll need to get, of course, with the G dot Commissioner and see what his schedule looks like. Once we see that, you know, we'll call Dennis. I think Dennis is retired, so he should be a little more flexible. And uh, and then I would also like to, uh, I don't wanna keep Tyler Peak, who's our uh, district engineer, out of the deal. We talked today about getting him the data too. So we'll keep all of them plugged in. We'll have all of them pulling in our.
We have a meeting on the thirteenth of July. So.
Before then?
Well, before then or that day after the meeting.
Is that uh?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, the thirteenth, we have a meeting.
Okay, uh, let's, let's look at, at, I'm superstitious, y'all know, but.
It's not a Friday.
But uh, let's, let's look at sometime that week and see what we can do. And we'll, we'll see what he has.
Yeah.
Twelve.
May Friday thirteenth, come on.
Phil, the marketing.
I.
Oh, they're so funny.
If we go and I'm driving, I am not riding with you.
I, I understand. I've, I've, I've had you ride with me before. But we won't be skipping any uh, we'll be skipping over any uh, uh, leaps of the road this time.
Uh, to the board, I would like to also give this to Michelle. This is another grant opportunity and it's for bridges. It is through, it's the bridge investment program. So Michelle, you can look into that because.
That's what you sent me through email and I passed that off to Mr. Cawthorn. Is that the same thing, Bill?
Send it off system. Thank you. Cause I, I'm looking at some of that yesterday.
Right. I mean, because we have so much work to do, get done. And I also would like to make a suggestion that next year. Uh, reach out to our senators, whoever that may be, because they have what they call earmark money available. And you can go to them also asking for money for special projects. So, and then the other one was the Safety Street Road, uh, SS four A grant is due September the fifteenth. There you go, Bill. Because as you all have just stated, there's a lot of money needed.
I was looking at yesterday, it was like it was, almost needed to be in a plan with local counties.
Well, be a part of that. Is that something feasible for us since we, uh, fifty-four runs into um, true? Don't we have roads that run into Harris County and Upson?
Mm-hmm.
That could also work on a regional basis that they may also need. I mean, you just gotta look, be as.
We got eighteen, and you got roads that come on to eighteen that go into Pine Mountain, for sure.
Another thing is due, I mean, we don't know, but.
State route.
State route eighteen, but then we have roads that come on to eighteen, then that go on into Harris County if you're gonna try to. State Route eighteen, but that we have roads that come on to eighteen then that go on into Harris County if you're gonna try to join those, any of those together.
One of the other things that, that we, we, we need to do with there, uh, they'll have their, uh, state aid administrator there. Uh, that's the person with the, the first street, knows where it's coming from. So we should be able to gather some information for them on what of the infrastructure grants would be, could be most likely to get and what might be most beneficial. So I, I think, the other day we met with the, you know, with the folks from the, this district. The state, state engineer is gonna really know, he's gonna know a lot more about that because he's gonna have to deal with all that money committed to the state. So, so we need to look at that.
Is the only place to go for the meetings at DOT office here in town?
That's where we need to go because that, you know, that's where he, he'll have all of his staff and, uh.
So you're going to talk to the commissioner of GDOT?
Uh, the commissioner of GDOT, because he has, he has a lot of control of the dollars. And then we'll think our board will never yet, uh, was, or ask him to meet us there. And, uh.
And Mr. P?
Yeah, we'll, you know, he'll invite Mr. P probably. But we used to go and meet with just the state aid administrator and the commissioner. And the state aid administrator would say, okay, we got these dollars available, whatever. And then we'd say, okay, we'll get you a check and we'll get a check and we.
Think we need to wear holy overalls?
I don't know.
I do like Mr. Carl Garner used to, he used to take cases of peaches up there. So we probably have to take some with us.
We used to take.
That's not a bad idea.
I know. He used to take cases of peaches.
Yeah.
So, GDOT.
We can take a little something if y'all are bad, just, just.
Didn't you take a basket the last time?
I think we did take a basket of them.
We're going, we need to go late morning, get out of there early afternoon.
I always like to have about ten o'clock meeting and then leave, talk after lunch and come over.
If I drive, we'll get out of there. Don't you worry about it.
So, based on what we've discussed, so we had voted to, uh, use Weaver Road and, and, um, King Road for Forest Road. So do we need to go back in and, um, or are we gonna wait until we find out how, uh, GDOT's gonna do this or how?
I'd say it'll, it'll remain in the Lamig thing and they're not working on those roads yet, right?
Right.
Yeah, but they are willing to work on them.
Oh, are they? Okay. Cause I know we can't take a vote in the work session.
Well, they got, they, they just finished Lacane and, and John Bee, whatever, and then they getting ready to go to the one at Lake Maryweather, right?
They're finishing with that one that they're talking about, they're talking about. I don't know whether, it's hard to know. But I'll tell you one thing, and then it, it didn't happen, but, um, they're gonna go to Hughley I think next.
But where? Hughley? Oh, okay.
It's down close to Pine Mountain.
Okay.
Cause pretty much everything else with the, we're, we're parked is, uh, see the full deck recommendation, we have some patching and overlay. And like Hughley, we're gonna have several patch units, which are rough spot with the railroad tracks where under some other patches. So they're gonna do some patching and then we surf on that.
The, the motion on that was made by, uh, Mr. Plats, second of the commission has to move forward with making the necessary changes over the big funds. Move King Road and Weaver Park Road to Forest Road to address the five patch area and come back to the board with prices.
Okay. And maybe I need to clarify in my mind now, but if, at this point, would we be better served to keep it like it is? The Lamig present list, because we're going to have to come back on Forest to determine the amount of money that will need to be spent, but then you've still got to do, uh, get the contracts out. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, if you did the whole four miles, it definitely.
Right. So you've got to bid it.
Yeah, we'd have to bid it. We, we, if we put back, we can put that together quick, quickly. We, we, I mean, it's not like we're skipping all over fifteen roads, but, but due to the, due to the cost of, of that project, you can't add a two hour.
This one I.
You gotta live it, what you can add, what you want in that one. Uh, you might could add the hundred and forty. You might could add the hundred and forty.
We can't take a vote here, so how do we need to handle this for them to go ahead and proceed with Weaver and King then? I mean, our next meeting wouldn't be to the thirteenth.
Yeah, we can vote it next time.
We can vote to confirm it or whatever, but if we can just get a consensus, what's, since the board is here?
Well, I, I wanna say this, and I'm not trying to be ugly. Weaver Road does not need to be resurfaced. I would rather you take that and put it off on Beulah Evans Road, on the next road going over. Uh, I know there are several roads, it was not a road I selected, and I do not, I've been on that road. There is nobody that lives on that road. That other road was, uh, uh, two, two years ago, the road was closed. And I cannot justify to my constituents why that road's gonna get resurfaced.
Can you just give me that? I don't think any of us selected the roads. They were selected and they just went on. I didn't select the roads.
I, I did it based on
Right.
the pavement condition. And I was trying to find roads with a certain distance.
I was gonna say, I didn't select my road.
Well, what if we did this? What if, uh, uh, because Ms. Shirley's talking about some other roads, we need to get the dollars or dozens or whatever. I, I mean, we could, we could go ahead with a consensus to do what's King Road.
King.
Yeah, King is.
We could just, we'll just skip this other road till we get to
That's fine.
maybe y'all's next meeting and maybe by then.
Yeah, cause we'll be, if we can go to GDOT at Tuesday before the meet on the twelfth, and then we can come back in, maybe we'll know something and we can vote on it then.
Because I've been on Ki- King Road once.
So if we do that and go to GDOT on the twelfth, a couple of us, and get that done, then we can bring it back on Wednesday for our meeting and vote and we'll know more.
We've got, um, what is that west, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Hawks Nest and then the road right next.
That is on the contract.
So the next road next to Hawks Nest, Coweta, that needs it. I just got, I
All in bad shape.
They're all bad shape. And I just, Ms. Womack just didn't call me the other day.
You, you could.
She calls me too.
In a hat and shake it around, draw it around.
That's exactly what I told Mr. Bill when we discussed King Road and all. I said, you could put a lot of roads in the hat, shake them up, and it really wouldn't matter because you've got the need for so many. And I, I respect your opinion and all of that, but what, what concerns me is that if it has to come back up, is it going to be in worse shape the next go around on Weaver Parks?
No.
And with that being said, I haven't, I'm not familiar with the road, so I'd like to write out to see.
I say move forward, whatever the people in the area, representatives here in the area want for that, however we do it, we can come back and vote on that Wednesday. That's my opinion.
So, so we really need our, the pet consensus is Key is okay, we'll hold the other one.
On leader.
We'll look and talk about it after we get back.
We're gonna need to look at the money as well, at how much money we had.
Exactly.
Over Weaver Park, we're doing the full depth recommendation of Coyote.
So we'll try to do the meeting on the twelfth. If y'all can set that up, let us know, we'll do that. We can come back on Wednesday at our regular meeting, have more information to make a more educated vote.
And if the meeting time, if they, if they get out to Key Road, if there is that area, we'll have to mobilize and come back, we'll, we'll get it.
Y'all work whatever out, y'all need to work out and we'll vote for it on that Wednesday.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Anything else?
Thank y'all.
All right. Here in Nunda, have a motion to adjourn.
Slow move.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? We done.